Okay, so yeah, we're just gonna go through what the ordinances right now, just in case you have any questions and hopefully it can clear up a few things.
Different presentation?
So, Alica, based on what you just said, is this purely an educational thing or are we going to discuss possible changes to it after we understand it better?
We can. The main purpose is more for educational, right? To make sure we're all on the same page and we understand. But we can discuss things that we could change and bring it right back through planning commission and city council.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, so.
She hopped up before me.
Are we good?
Okay, we're ready.
Okay. Okay, so first off, we have the definitions. I mean, is there any questions about anything? I did notice that gross and net, I believe, have the same definition. But one is basically the whole, so gross is the whole project, so the whole lot, and then net is is kinda going through and taking out like the roads, the space for the roads, or, yeah, yeah. And that's we'll see later on. So one use can only take up eighty percent of the project. So, once that twenty percent is taken out, you have that area left, and then from that area, you would have to take out what you would be using for roads. And then whatever is left, that's what you're calculating density off of. But any questions on any other definitions?
I thought the, for the wasn't there language in the mixed-use ordinance that says it cannot be combined with a retention pond?
I think it can't. It can't, like, the retention part can't, or sorry, the detention pond cannot be like its own open space.
Right, okay, maybe that's why. So, I mean, because it says large areas of grass, so you can read into that being the same thing. People like, oh, a large area, a large area of grass is a retention pond, the same thing. Therefore, you can build an apartment complex with a retention pond and call it mixed-use.
Right, and it does say later on that it can't just be that, but we could update the definition to clarify that a little bit more.
Yeah, it'd be helpful, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, to just say excludes the retention pond area. Anything else?
I'm looking at the definition of a park.
Yeah.
And then I'm going down here to open space. And it says, "Open space shall serve passive recreational purposes, but it includes a park, which is active and passive."
Yeah. Yeah. It could, I mean, I I guess that's dependent on us and what we want to classify that as. But you're right, park would be more recreational, and that's a different definition on its own.
I just wonder if, in the future, we could run into legal problems with somebody that wants to come along and...
Yeah, and maybe, because I know recreational, we'll get into that a little bit, is more like sports courts, like pickleball and all that. So maybe for a park, I've seen other cities say something like, well, like, maybe a bench, you know, things like that. Yeah, like, you would have to add amenities like that. It can't just be grass, unless you guys are okay with that. But I guess when it comes to like a playground, right? That I would consider more, which would be part of a park, I would consider more as recreational. So maybe we can do a better job at, and it does say that, playgrounds are recreational. So I guess it depends what we want to, um, say a park is.
Because right now, yeah, it's just grass, trees, landscape.
It's just a little confusing, because like you say, later on, it does speak to, right?
Yeah.
Other recreational uses. Is this thing on?
I know, I feel like it's not, but...
It's on, I checked yours, it's on, but it's not very loud. Maybe speak closer to it.
Okay, there you go. Still seems quiet.
It's okay, we can hear you. That's a matter of...
Okay, as long as you can hear me. Yeah, it does speak to it later on, so it's a little bit confusing. Oh, thank you, Rod. That's all.
Okay.
You know, and I'm just reading this, um, this down here on three C. You know, I might have misunderstood, but it sounds to me like what we're talking about with the retention pond is a little bit different than what we said. Says, "A retention pond area shall not fill the open space requirement unless such retention pond serves at least one additional public purpose, such as a recreation field or a park."
Right.
So often, if a retention pond is deemed to be a park, then you could build the apartment complex with just a retention pond.
Yeah, but, yeah, and that's something we should go, we should look into is well, in that case, what should they add to make it a park?
Well, and I think those, I think that's the essence of why I bring it up, because yes, we need to, that's something that needs clarification, because I don't think that's what anybody had, what any of us had in mind.
No.
No.
But if we don't clarify it, then we are left with what it says.
Right, right. This is one of the reasons we're going over it too. So yeah, definition of a park. Um, we can definitely update that.
Awesome.
And so, and we can bring it back up. Well, let's continue and let's see where the states is. Okay, other than that, still on definitions. We're good?
Good.
Okay. Alright. Our favorite part, the residential. Um, so like I mentioned, one use can take up eighty percent of our mixed use, and when it comes to residential, it has to be a mix of two different types. So it can be single-family attached and detached, or multifamily, like apartments. But they have to at least have two different types, two different housing types. They can cluster residential units, um, they can have a combination of like have it be commercial on the bottom and like apartment on top. Yeah.
So with that, when you talked about the eighty percent rule, does that mean that if it's residential, eighty percent is for instance, an example, is single-family and then the twenty percent is multifamily?
No.
Or does the residential component as a whole is the eighty percent?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there, is there a a better way to set that so that we get what we want out of a mixed-use zone? Is eighty percent the most common percentage? Because I don't think we're real happy with the mixed-use zones we have right now in the city, so that's so I was just kinda waiting till we got down to this part to see, you know, just looking at other cities and, and the mixed-use zone and what the goal of that is. And I wish that city council was here just to kinda get that input also of, of what we want a mixed-use zone to look like in West Haven. A mixed-use zone is like a city center or like the center of the village, right? Um, that we want, that we want people to be able to congregate. It is not, you know, a group of apartments.
Right.
And that's what it's turned into.
Right.
With maybe a store or something.
Right.
What, what areas do we have in the city that's, that's still zoned mixed-use?
Um, most of it is, um, east of nineteen hundred.
Okay.
Um, east of I fifteen.
Okay.
Um, everything else, for the most part, well, other than like that Walmart property, that's also kinda mixed-use. Everything else is taken.
Okay.
And and actually towards the end of this, um, it does say that nothing else can be rezoned to mixed-use west of nineteen hundred. So it's whatever's left now.
So, is there a way for us to write this to where they have to include a commercial port component? Not that they choose twenty percent to be a park, but that they choose the twenty percent has to be some sort of commercial?
So, um, with that being said, with most of it being, um, east of nineteen hundred, there are, there is a commercial overlay in that area. Um, which we can get to here in a second. But yeah, for the percentages, we can always change that. I mean, we can make mixed-use whatever we want it to be. If we wanna lower that percentage and city council is okay with that, we can definitely look into that. And I'll look at other cities too and see what they're doing. But even if they are doing the eighty, ninety percent of one, we can still define it however we'd like.
Right.
Yeah.
I do think, I, I think I forgot that that, that most of that was in that commercial overlay already in that area, and then the one ti, the one place, and Walmart, that one corner where Walmart is, that's the only other one that's left in mixed-use, right?
Yes.
That's west of nineteen hundred, so that makes, that does make a difference.
Can you explain, um, back to that last one, that last slide, can you explain clustering? Clustering of residential units?
Yeah, and we do actually have a clustering ordinance, so that would go hand in hand with that. So basically with that, you, you can have it all in one and then have the rest, all in one area and have the rest be open space. But what specific question do you have, I guess, for that?
I just didn't know what it was.
Oh, yeah, that, it doesn't have to be spread out. It could be in one little area. So basically, going back to that, that nest, that, um, net project area. So, they can have it all be in one area and have all that density be there. And then have the rest be commercial or open space or whatever it may be. And, um, maybe later on, we can go through that commercial ordinance, or sorry, the clustering ordinance, and we can talk through that. Um, I'm actually having a conversation about that next work session, I believe, with city council.
That would be good.
And then after that, we'll bring it back to you guys. Okay. Okay, open space. So, yeah, basically, they can have trail, park, plaza, and as noted, if that's their second use, it has to be at least twenty percent. Um, and it has to be open to the public. Um, and they have to have certain signage that says that. And I don't know where exactly it says, but later on, it does say that it has to be kind of in the outskirts of the project so that it's accessible to people. So it's not like hidden, they have to go through the, the housing or the development to get to it.
So putting, so putting pickleball courts in the middle of an apartment complex is not gonna cut it, correct?
Yeah, um, yeah, with how this is worded, right.
Around the outside of it, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would say the only way around that is to have a lot of signage saying, hey, that you can come in, but I don't know, maybe this is just a personal opinion. I wouldn't want to go inside a development, so that's why it's written. So it's at the outskirts of the, the project.
And they could do that, but it wouldn't count as their open space. It wouldn't count as any one of those. So they could still do it, as long as they weren't trying to count that as part of that requirement.
Okay.
And I think it was on the previous slide, it said they all have to be on the exterior.
So yeah, so common area, like listed, it can be there and it could be maintained by HOA, but it wouldn't count towards their twenty percent or eighty, if they really wanted to make that the main point. Alright, kinda going with that recreational, so again, public access to this, um, it would be any sort of sports fields. Be pickleball, tennis, playgrounds, trails, as long as it's not the, can, cannot include sidewalks. Um, I mean, is there anything else you would want to add to that? Like, yes, I have a whole list.
And did you have suggestions, Alica, I mean, when you were looking at it?
Um, no, I mean, most of what I see is that, in other ordinances, is courts and playgrounds, but I don't know, maybe there's something I'm not thinking about. That ma, that seems to be the main thing that people go for.
Yeah, I can't think of anything else.
Then the next one is cultural and institutional. I mean, very few developers go for that. Um, but it is an option, so it could be some sort of community center or library. And, or if they have any other idea, they can come in front of planning commission and pitch their idea and go from there.
I just figured out these are not in order, are they?
No, sorry.
I'm going, where are you?
Sorry, yeah, I put commercial last just because that has more and started with residential, because that's the main one, but yeah, they're not in order.
Do these sixteen hundred square foot buildings include restrooms, or is that just for the library, or?
Um, I mean, I would assume so, yeah.
That's a very small cultural center.
That is very small.
Smaller than my house, actually, so.
Yeah, it is. Well, I'm not sure what specifically your house is, but for most homes.
Thank you for clarifying that.
For most homes.
But mine has two restrooms and that's included in my little over eighteen hundred square feet, in case the public wants to know how big my house is. So I'm just curious if there's some sort of requirement, or if we can require that at the time of...
Just in, in just building permits, right?
Yeah.
Just in, in building codes, that they would have to require
Okay.
Restrooms per, per how many square feet it is, so that would be required in it. And that would be included in the sixteen hundred. That was just the minimum.
And handicap spaces for parking?
Yep, all of that.
Right, yeah. Alright, next, commercial. Alright, so as mentioned, there are areas that have a commercial overlay. Um, so most of it is east of I fifteen. Um, so we have the three hundred feet north from the edge of the right away of twenty-one hundred south. Um, and three hundred feet east and west of the edge of the right away for eleven hundred west. And that's basically where the mixed-use is, that's available right now. And then south of twenty-one hundred, it's basically the whole thing, south of the right away of twenty-one hundred south. Um, I don't think our current zoning map shows that, but I can have that be updated to show those existing commercial overlays. I think it even references that in the code. So, that'll make it easy, maybe like a hatch or something for people to know, hey, you have to have commercial in this area. It doesn't have to fall within that three hundred feet necessarily. But if the property falls within it, somewhere on there, it has to have commercial.
Did that map that they were doing last week with city council, did he have that on that one when he was doing the commercial overlay? Was it highlighted on that one? I can't remember.
Don't believe so, but I can make sure it does.
I have a question, and this might be kinda stupid, but, um, would it be possible sometime in some future work session to get in a van and go take a tour of some of these areas?
Yeah.
I think I've got a pretty good idea of where the West Haven boundaries are. Um, west of I fifteen, but honestly, I'm not really sure, you know, I've got a general idea, but I don't really know for certain where some of this is on, on the east side. And, um, you know, when you're driving around in your car, it's hard to get a, you know, map out on your iPad and figure it all out. Well...
I know that when the, like, when they were doing the FIZZ and what is that, up there, Roxbury or whatever?
Yeah.
That we took a minute and went up there, just, just because stuff wasn't quite clear. So a couple people left and just went up there just to check it out during the work session, just to make sure, you know, before we made a decision without seeing it, so if that's something that we wanna do, we could maybe plan that as a, as a, at a future work session.
Yeah, I might be the only one who doesn't know, and if I am, then, then maybe I'll just have one of you drive me around one day. That, that area up there, you know, I've, I've got a general idea, I, you know, I have Twenty-first Street, but don't really know where all the boundaries are.
That's, yeah, if that's something you all wanna do.
You're not the only one, and it's because the boundaries are a mess.
We can do that.
So.
Yeah, we can do it next work session or the session after that. We'll figure that out.
Even if, you know, when it gets warmer outside.
I was gonna say, when it's not bad weather, yeah, that would be great.
You let me know.
Thanks.
Hey, while we're on the topic of, um, hey, this is me, I'm actually attending.
I know.
Sorry, guys. Little change of plans, but, um, I was just thinking too, and this was hard for me as being a newbie when I came in, and I'm still struggling. But I thought where we have newer folks on the board too, um, getting a map with the name of the subdivisions, because sometimes they'll say, well, that's similar to Seacrest, or that's similar to that. I'm still not clear where, like, I know what Child Farms is, because everybody's referenced that, we don't wanna repeat that mistake again with the um, short, or the not very wide roads. But anyway, I thought it might be good to have a map with an overlay of all the subdivision names just to reference, because I think it comes up in meetings from time to time, and I have to kinda backpedal and try to figure out which location is which when we're making comparisons, so just, just a thought that might be helpful to others. I've been on it for six years and I'm still trying to recall the different names of the subdivisions, so.
I think you're right, Becky. When we had that, when we had the, all the zoning, and we had all the, all the subdivisions named on that rezoning map, it was like, oh, there it is. There it is, there's that one. That's a great idea.
Absolutely, a great idea.
Yeah, we have that. Um, I'll make sure it's updated, and then I can email it, or do you want, guys want a hard copy?
Both would be good.
Okay.
Yeah, because I think that big binder that I got when I came on is pretty irrelevant, but I think I'm gonna get together just a really small folder with, um, a few little cheat sheets for zoning, and then maybe the name of the sub. So some of those might be quick reference, that might be harder to find maybe electronically, but would be nice for a quick desk reference when we're in a meeting. But that's just my opinion. It would help me, because I'm a visual person, and I take, it takes me a while to find things electronically, but...
No, that sounds great.
That's great, Becky, thank you.
Okay. And for commercial, anything that is permitted or conditional under C one and C two is permitted for mixed-use. Okay, any questions for this? Or suggestions?
I think the last suggestion was a great suggestion.
Yeah. It's great, I'll get that to you guys. And this is a lot of what we've already discussed, about the twenty percent, a minimum of the twenty percent can be, it's subject to the commercial overlay. Yeah, C one, C two.
The, the D one, um, that is, so you can't have like a big warehouse with a little office up front, right?
For...
How does that, how does that translate? There, like, on the list.
Fifty percent.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I guess you could, well, a warehouse would be more manufacturing anyway, but yeah, at least half of it has to be something that's gonna bring in tax revenue.
No questions?
Just trying to think how you determine that, especially if, if it's a warehouse for like internet sales in general.
Well, I might be off on the C one, C two zoning. What is...
That's, uh, lighter commercial. Um, we have a whole list of what's permitted and conditional and that. Um, but office, office use is permitted. Um, so I can see someone bringing in, or designing like a shell, basically, like, hey, this is gonna be office use. What I see is most of them don't know what's gonna come in until afterwards, so it would have to be, we just have to designate that, that that can only be this type of C one or C two. We have to be clear on that. Because, yeah, when they come in, they're not really necessarily thinking, oh, this specific business is gonna go in here. Right, they're just saying, I'll have this space for business or a commercial. And whatever comes can just, if it's permitted, then it'll go in. And I kinda leave it up to us. So that's a little tricky. And I guess that would have to be more on staff. If they were to have just like the shell, and if someone were to come in and apply for a specific business, then I would have to check and say, okay, well, does this count toward that fifty percent? But we should probably be more clear about that upfront. And yeah, the last bullet is just basically saying that they have to follow our design review ordinance. Which, are you guys familiar with that? I know most of it is laid out, like, when an applicant comes in for site plan approval. Um, that, the staff report is stuff that's out of that ordinance. You look like you have something to say. Oh, okay. Okay, density. Um, so we do have specific areas for different densities. Um, so low density is zero to four point nine units, that's not permitted for mixed-use as of right now. Uh, medium-low density, which is five to eight point nine dwelling units per acre of net project size. That can basically go anywhere. But the, the high, um, the fifteen to thirty dwellings per acre, so that can only be north of the center line of twenty-one hundred south. Um, I think I skipped one. The medium-high density, the nine to fourteen point nine. So though, that's all south of the center line of twenty-one hundred south. Um, and again, we can add that note to the zoning map so that that's clear as to where, what kinda density can go where. And so that, that area that, um, that's east of ni, that, yeah, that's east of nineteen hundred, basically all of the mixed-use that's left would have to be medium-high to high-density, and we're probably looking at more high-density in that area.
And for the medium-high, that's the only place?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and the medium-low, it can go anywhere. If they really wanted to only have the five to eight point nine, they could. I don't foresee that being the case, but the option's there. Yeah, and then the last bullet is just that, it's not permitted west of nineteen hundred. Unless it's already zoned, but I don't think there's anything left, other than that. Yeah, other than the Walmart property.
Okay, so if this is in the the ordinance this way, what happens when we go to, uh, when somebody goes to develop that Walmart property? Uh, is there going to be a problem, um, if it's zoned mixed-use and this is...
No, if it's already currently mixed-use, then that's what it is. It's, that's, that bullet point is mainly saying it can't, any new mixed-use can't come in, so any, nobody can come in and rezone their property west of nineteen hundred. But if it's already zoned mixed-use, then that's what it is.
But if, say, Walmart comes in, asks to rezone it for commercial, for C two, it's that way in the general plan, they can do that?
To rezone the whole thing?
Yeah.
Yeah, they can.
Okay.
If they really wanted to. And that, that's a whole other conversation, but yeah.
But we are at the risk of more apartment buildings in the mixed-use area over there by Walmart.
Okay. But that, that, that seems like a great place for them.
Yeah, I think that would be good.
That's sensible, in my opinion. Because that's where a lot of that, that area is already built out with apartments and stuff. The same with where we've got on the east of I fifteen, I think that's...
Yeah, that's a great location. I'd go with okay for around the Walmart property.
I think, I think, I think it's the, I think it's the, the best option for that property, I mean, quite frankly, with what's left.
Yeah, they have thirty acres there. A superstore usually takes about twenty, so they have plenty of space.
Yeah.
You know, and I hear what you said about this is only for new m, mixed-use, but I don't think that's the way it reads in this ordinance.
I mean, we can't change the zoning if it's already zoned as mixed-use. And I think that was maybe the thought of when I was going through, well, there's not a lot that's not developed that's zoned mixed-use. Only that one property. And it may just become a... And it may just be commercial, we don't know. But you're right, it doesn't say any new mixed use projects. But if someone comes in and wants to develop that as mixed use, I can't say no, because that's what it's currently zoned.
Exactly my point. Yeah, so we, we, with that, well, I, so I guess that's, that's where this ordinance seems to be a little bit out of sync with wi- with, with the zoning maps. Because if this says you can't have mixed use west of nineteen hundred, but we already have areas that are zoned mixed use west of nineteen hundred, then.
If it was, if it was already done previously, before this was written, so when, once this is written and, and passed, then it's from that date forward. So where it was already mixed use, that means that, that gets to stay. They get to keep that, because they were, they already had a zone for that. But now, in the future, now nothing west of nineteen hundred can be rezoned to mixed use. So that's, that's what it's saying. So it stopped the mixed use zoning from happening again west of nineteen hundred. So it just pushed all that mixed use zoning that was in place east of nineteen hundred and then mainly on Twenty-first Street. So that we wouldn't get any more of that anywhere else in West Haven. So it, so it just stopped it. So it was like, that pocket of time when mixed use was pushed through, and then it was like, oops. And so it just, it kind of froze it in place, what was already done, and then, and then changed the zoning so that it couldn't keep happening.
Okay, so essentially what you're saying is that we, everything that was already mixed use gets grandfathered in. But we don't need to specify that grandfathering in this ordinance, because it's understood.
Yeah, and I think what you're saying is that maybe it would help to read that no new mixed use will be permitted west of nineteen hundred. It's kind of what, if I'm getting that correct.
Yeah, because I, you, you know, those of you who, who understand or used to reading this kind of stuff, you're like, oh, this is the way it works. But somebody new picking it up and reading it fresh that doesn't have that background is, is gonna have the same questions that I just asked.
And that definitely helps, right? Because in our minds, we're like, yeah, obviously, that makes sense. But someone coming in, applying, we'll see it the way you are.
And I think it would be, behoove us to, to change that to no new mixed use projects.
Yeah, from the, from the adoption of this.
Cause right now, the way it reads, we would have a leg to stand on theoretically to go, if somebody wants to build on it, we're not allowing it according to this ordinance. I mean, we're kind of, but we're, we're saying you can, because it's already zoned that way, but we're not allowing it, because you.
I get it. There's, yeah, and there's something wrong with clarifying that.
Clarifying it with Amy or.
That would probably help.
And Alka, I hope you understand that, you know, we're really glad you're going through this with us. And it's us asking you a bunch of questions. This is, we're, we're glad we've got someone to ask questions to, so. Um, we appreciate your knowledge on this.
No, that's fine. And I know this ordinance is not perfect and it may never be perfect. But, I mean, this was just passed last year, right? Or updated last year. So even now, reading through, you can pick out, oh, maybe that could be said better. Because especially after seeing it like over and over in different meetings, it's like, okay, we're good, pass it.
And I want to mention too, that that's why these work sessions, I think, are pretty valuable when we're going over these ordinances. Because I think it's, the format is just a little more user friendly to kind of ask the questions and um, get better knowledge and understanding of things. So, um, yeah, I think it's really important. So keep the questions coming, because I think a lot of people have, and then someone, someone might be listening in and have those same questions. So I think it's really good to bring those up.
Yeah, for sure. Um, any other questions for this slide for the density? Okay, rezone. And this may also be a different work session, just the rezone process, but for now. So yeah, when someone comes in, well. Oh, it's a completely thing. Yeah, when someone comes in and wants to research a property to mixed use, they need to have a concept plan. So we need to know, like, this is what it's gonna look like, this is what they're thinking. Yeah, and then basically that second bullet is, it's um, the rezone process. Which again, that can be a separate work session, we can go through that.
So I might be confused on this, but didn't we just cover that we're not gonna approve anymore?
I know, that's why I'm like, well, yeah, but that's still part of the ordinance, I'm just going through it. Um, I guess.
Is all that area already rezoned to mixed use east of nineteen hundred on Twenty-first Street? Or is it just on the general plan?
It's on the general plan, but there is quite a bit of, I think there's some areas that aren't, like especially south of twenty-one hundred. Um, it's still showing as like commercial. Um, C2 and C3 and M1 and, and M2, I think it's just M2. Um, so that could be rezoned to mixed use. So, right, that's why I stopped that first, I'm like, well. It would just be for that area, but there's still procedure that they would have to go through. Um, but regardless, we, rezones happen all the time, whether it's mixed use or not. So that's another thing we'll have to cover in another work session. But yeah, basically they would just have to have a concept plan. And then after that, they have a year to kind of get things rolling. Yeah, and if they really need an extension, they have to come back to planning commission and we'll grant them that extension. Or not, depending on what you guys want to do.
Is there a reason that we have to provide them with sixty days notice? Shouldn't they already know that they?
I think it's just a courtesy thing, but.
Well, I, I get that, but. We have to be courteous about these things.
You don't want to be courteous?
I think it would probably fall more under not only them, but a public notification, yeah, as well.
Okay, so development agreement. So for all mixed use, um, developments that come in, there has to be a, a development agreement that outlines, yeah, the design criteria. They still have to follow our, our ordinance, our design review ordinance. But that would just be something that, that would be in the MDA. But yeah, things like setbacks and landscaping, just different patterns, aesthetics, anything like that. Um, that would have to be in the MDA and that has to come through for a planning commission and then be approved by city council.
Here comes more questions. Okay, so this paragraph B here tells the kinds of things that need to be included in an MDA. But we've apparently had some, um, some concerns with MDAs. And I wonder if it makes sense to expand this section. I mean, not just in the mixed use development agreement, well, maybe that's where it belongs. But expand more of what's required in an MDA to, you know, give, um, give developers a better idea of things that they need to be looking for. Give, um, the planning commission and the city, uh, some kind of a checklist to make sure that we've considered different things. I'm just kind of, um, brainstorming here, but I think we need I think we need to expand this guidance on what goes into an MDA so that we don't have some of the same concerns that we've had with other MDAs.
Yeah, and I mean, sometimes with MDAs, most of what should be in there is, comes out of discussion, right? Cause not all developments are the same. Um, so I guess it's just remembering to put it in as a condition for your motion or to add it to the MDA and make sure that's clear. Um, but yeah, that doesn't mean we can't have a, just like a checklist to start with. Or us expanding that paragraph to add other things. Um, but we're never gonna think of every single thing that should be in an MDA.
You know, and I don't know if you, if you, I don't know, put approvals by different groups or reviews by the city attorney or, you know, I don't know who all needs to look at these things, but. Yeah, I, I think, you know, somebody like you with the, the knowledge that you've got, give some thought to expanding this guidance.
We can absolutely do that. But yes, just, just a reminder. Um, I know there may be a lot of conversation that happens, right? Or dialogue that happens when the applicant is in front of you. Make sure that is put in the MDA. If there is one, make sure that's put in a motion as a condition, because otherwise it's kind of hard to enforce, even though there was that dialogue.
Well, we've had, we've had that dialogue, dialogue in the past in our motion, and then it didn't get passed in, when it went through city council. And so it wasn't enforced, because we'd had it in ours, and then it went through city council, city council didn't include the same um, verbiage when they, when they sent it through. And so, so even if we do include it, you know, that we need to know going to city council to please include this in their motion.
Right, and, you know, staff can remind them, say, hey, this is what, this, these were the conditions. Do you agree with them? If you do, make sure you put in the motion. Um, but there'll be things like site plans that don't go to city council that we have control over and we can have conditions for. I know that's different than this ordinance, but.
I think to commission member Gault's point, it's hard to find or think about what isn't there versus what is there. So, I mean, that, I, I think perhaps some sort of at least basic checklist could be helpful to the planning commission and to the city council. Because we have had some difficulty with previous MDAs that seem to keep coming back to us.
Yeah, for amendments, you mean? Yes, yes, and it, yeah, it's gonna be hard to think of every single thing, but yeah.
Exactly.
But yeah, we can have, we can have some sort of, I guess, kind of like a checklist or like a reminder of, hey, think about this. Maybe this won't apply to the specific one, but something to think about for the next one. Yeah, we can put that together.
Thank you.
But yeah, that can maybe be a work session of maybe looking at other MDAs that have been approved. I'm kind of looking at like, okay, this was said in there, or how can we word it so that it's not up for interpretation? My future staff, I think that's also an issue. We make sure we're clear.
You know, and I, I wonder if maybe, um, someplace like, um, League of Cities and Towns or something, maybe they have some um, sample documents or something, or, or maybe there's a professional organization that, that maybe you belong to, I don't know. Um, a lot of times, there's, there's organizations that, um, share best practices.
Yeah, and I can do, definitely do more research on that and see how we can improve with MDAs, because they're not gonna go away. Okay, so site development standards, so single family homes and townhomes within three hundred feet of commercial manufacturing or industrial zones um, have to submit a study by a, a sound engineer um, that basically outlines the impacts of the existing sounds, the existing uses. And then there's that buffering requirement. If this new project is next to A1, R1 and R2, and that's not the case, um, where we currently have that available mixed use, but still good to know. Um, they need to have buffering, so they would at least have to have the sixteen thousand square feet or larger if they're next to A1 or R1. And if they're adjacent to R2 zones, um, eight thousand square feet or larger. So yeah, the most dense portion of the project would be neighboring commercial, industrial and manufacturing. We didn't start without you. Yeah, and then there could be a natural buffer. Yeah, any questions on that? I mean, I think that's pretty straightforward, but you can have any questions on buffering.
I think we're good. I think that is pretty straightforward.
Yeah, and like I mentioned, what's available is not next to A1, R1 or 2. They are next to, um, commercial though, and should be manufacturing, but not.
Do they have a table anywhere of the specifications of what decibel levels should be for anything like, when the, when the sounder comes in, what he's gonna measure against?
Um, we don't, but we could.
Okay, we see I'm getting at, we, we could hire and then they could do a study, but what determines, like, well, seventy decibels is fine as opposed to eighty decibels? What's gonna, what's our standard gonna be? So when you, when you, what requires me to measure something, it's a good practice to have somebody have a standard measurement for that.
Do we not have that in the manufacturing zone and in the?
Um, I believe we do, but we can also bring it in here, just so it's clear.
That's what, yeah, or at least reference to it, yeah.
Cause you're right, they can, sure, they'll do the study, but then what? Um, yeah, so I'll make sure that's referenced in here. Well, I'll make a note of it and then obviously bring it back to you guys.
So there's no requirement whatsoever as it pertains to apartment buildings, correct?
What do you mean?
In terms of sound.
Of the sound? No, no. What it kind of resays is apartments could be right up against. That, at least that's what it's saying to me. Well, maybe not right up against, there still has to be a buffer, but yeah.
Is that something, Jeff, that you want addressed?
No, just a question.
I mean, we can add apartments to that, the multifamily, to that first bullet, the residential, single family homes and townhomes.
I, I guess it would depend on how many noise complaints we get from apartment residents about the commercial development around them.
And that would be more of a question for Dan.
Yeah, I would think. I don't know, just something to think about.
Okay, I think we're good on that one.
All right, and that's, that's the last one. So any other suggestions? This is probably not the last time you'll see this ordinance.
Thank you for, again, for teaching us about that and answering our questions.
Yeah, no problem, and like I said, well, it'll never be perfect, but we can keep working on it. Yeah, you let me know when you guys want to have another work session to, you know, talk about what amendments we want to make to this ordinance. And I will also bring it up to city council.
I echo that, thank you. Very nice slide presentation too, by the way.
Um, okay, well, we can end this then and just take a break before we start at six. Um, okay, well, we can end this then and just take a break before we start at six.
Okay.
We're on, people, we're on, get your game face on. We're ready. Oh, I didn't hear it say we're recording, is it on? Thanks a lot, Robin.
That's good.
Did we switch to the, to the regular meeting one, or are we still on the work session? Okay, well, there's that. Okay, well, we.
See, we're on.
We want to welcome everyone to Planning Commission tonight, February fourteenth. We're gonna go ahead, there's a, a little bit of a change, Chairman Roundy wasn't here tonight, so um, I will be chairman for tonight, temporary chairman. Um, so we will go ahead and get started, we'll start with a pledge of allegiance by commission member Galt, and then we'll do a prayer, moment of silence by commission. Member Hepworth.
Can everyone please stand and join me in repeating the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
That's what people see from home.
Our Father in heaven, thank you for this opportunity you've given us to gather together as a planning commission of West Haven City. We ask a blessing to be upon this city, heavenly father, that we may be able to guide it and direct it in a way that would. Be pleasing unto its members, bless heavenly father that those members of our community and those. Around the nation that are serving in the military, that they may be watched over and protected. And that we may be able to have peace in all of our area, and these things we ask and pray for in the name of thy son, Jesus Christ, amen.
So, we're grateful to have people here tonight, online and in person, if you are online, would you please mute your mic? Um, raise your hand if you want to be called on. Um, and then we'll get you in at the appropriate time. Um, so we will go ahead with item number three on the agenda, action on minutes, so we have minutes from January twenty fourth. And I know that we had some revisions to it. Jeff, did you already send those in, or do you have them?
I did not send them in, I was gonna ask a question on number five, since. Com- commission member Stimson. Was actually here when we started the public hearing. Um, should we just remove the line that says that? You arrived at six eleven, just take that out of the minutes completely.
Yeah, I, well, that's what I would suggest, because I was, I probably dropped off at six ten and dropped back on at six eleven. Under my real name. Not under my secret name.
Okay. I was also gonna suggest that maybe. Further on down that, um, where it says that commission member Nice made the motion to enter into public hearing. Um, maybe we put the time on there so that we. Know what time we actually started that meeting, just for clarification. But that's just a suggestion. Yeah, the time that we actually started it, just to give.
On page five.
Yeah. Page five. I'm not sure exactly what the ugly black dot is, but. It took me forever on all my different computers trying to remove it and it just wouldn't go away.
Using an eraser.
Uh, I didn't try that, so. But it's legible. I would suggest on number seven. Where. I made a motion to table, maybe motion to table the discussion, since we were actually in a discussion about the general plan. Along with the council. And then I had it adjournment, um, I made a motion to adjourn, not to approve.
On number eight, okay.
And. I just wanna make another suggestion, I, I noticed that on the council minutes. They put the time that we actually adjourned the meeting.
Oh, okay.
And maybe we kind of start doing that just for clarification, for somebody that's reading them later on down the line. That's all I have on.
Is this a big deal, as to what time that we leave?
The council does it.
Yeah, but, really?
I mean, I don't care, I, I just noticed it.
I just didn't know if there's like, is this a problem?
People were asking for it.
If we're going for the record.
But the thing is with the, the minutes, they do not have to be exact, they have to be general, and that, that's the. You know, according to the code.
Okay.
I just didn't know if there was something specific, that there was a problem with the.
Just something I noticed.
With when we left.
No.
Just checking up on you, Amy, that's what we're doing.
Okay, I mean, fair enough, but.
Nope, that sounds, I, I don't have any other. Changes, does anyone else have anything? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve these minutes with the suggested changes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, any nays? Becky? Is she on? Is she?
Sorry, aye, I approve. Thank you.
Thanks, Robin. Okay. Um, alright, motion passes, okay, so we need to go to um, action on minutes three B for the special meeting on January twenty ninth. Um, and I didn't see anything on that one.
Yeah, once again, um. Is it legal for the council member to approve? The. Or to second a motion when it's a planning commission meeting?
Well, it was a joint meeting, so yeah.
Okay, good deal. I did notice that commission member Galt left that meeting after about five minutes, so he most likely did not vote.
I was here longer than five minutes.
Okay, whatever. He did, did you vote on?
What, what was the time? Turn, I did leave early.
Thank you.
We'll have to, we have to add him. A minute where he left?
No, I don't care.
Okay.
I, I've been counseled by the legal counsel on that, so.
Just needs to be general, we just need to know he's here, he left.
He was here, but he did not vote on that particular agenda.
General, Jeff. Um, okay.
That's all I got.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. I, I move to approve these minutes with the recommended changes.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 And any nays? Okay, motion passes, okay, let's move on to item number four on the agenda. Um, report, Alaka, is that you, my friend?
Yes, so ordinance four twenty-four, which is updating the private road standards, was approved by city council. And that's it.
Okay. Alright, well, that's great, alright, moving on to item number five. Um, discussion and action on a preliminary site plan, there's a, a preliminary site plan for OC one LLC located at approximately thirty-six seventy-five. South Midland Drive, parcel number zero eight dash zero two two dash zero one zero four, applicant Nicole Stangle. Nicole, um, if you are here, come on up and state your name and speak into the microphone, do I need her address also, Amy? Yes, name and address, please.
Okay, uh, my name is Nicole Stangle, the address is ninety east seventy-two hundred south. Uh, suite two hundred in Midville, and it's eight four oh four seven.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead and tell us about this.
Okay, this is a small oil change facility, um, Oil Changers is a national tenant. Um, they have a couple hundred locations, mostly located on the west coast of the US and some in the south. Um, their whole kind of uh, marketing thing is a ten minute oil change where you can stay in your car, they service you quickly, get you in and out. They are just now breaking into the Utah market, their first uh, construction project was in southern Utah. Um, in the Spanish Fork area, and they're just now looking in Weber and Davis County, so this will be their first location here.
Um, comments from staff, you, there were a lot of comments down and I, I'm sure everyone's read it, is there anything that stands out? That we need to discuss, or questions from commission members?
I was wondering if you could address the uh, ingress and egress in this. Looks a little bit tight to me.
Okay.
Uh, I know that the engineers and the fire department have looked at it, but can you speak to that?
Yeah, um, so the ingress and egress is a shared access with would be Tommy's Car Wash, which is the parcel to the. Direct north of us. What part of it seems tight, is it just the drive aisle, or, cause we do have twenty-six feet of. Um, distance between the end of the parking lots and the northern property line. Uh, which fire did say is ideal for circulation. Um, they, twenty-four to twenty-six feet is kind of the threshold that they like to see, they said twenty-four is okay, twenty-six is ideal. So we did actually widen that a little bit. Um, and we do have pass through to the back of the parcel if anyone. And we did add a bypass lane around the building if anyone really needs to circulate, um, even more than, than the site already allows for. Is, does that answer your question, or?
Yes, thank you.
Is the whole back lot yours also?
It is.
And is that, do you have any plans on that?
Not currently, no.
If you have any ideas, we would love that.
Sorry?
Do you have access out of the back of that lot?
No. Yeah, so we'll need to get easements in place. And we might talk.